Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're back in session for City Council Ordinance 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman, from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my immediate right by Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We also have representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's offices, respectively. Also joined by Deputy Mayor Dr. Letitia Giraza. We are here for Health Department. A couple of quick ground rules. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent, off, vibrate, or some other setting that does not make noise. Acting Commissioner Heller, how many slides do you have in your deck?
I believe about 15.
Okay. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
No more than 20 minutes.
Perfect. Before we get started, folks that are going to be testifying, there are two buttons on this device in front of you. You want to hit the button on the right in order to speak. The button will turn red, and the ring up here will turn red. When you finish speaking, please turn it off. These mics are very sensitive. They'll pick up breathing, sniffling, anything like that. Mary Beth, before you begin, if you could please introduce the members of your senior team that are here, first and last name and position title for the folks testifying, and then floor is yours on the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Costello. I'm very happy to be here and very happy to introduce my senior team. We have Hyung Tan, who is Deputy Commissioner for Aging and Care Services; Jennifer Martin, who is Deputy Commissioner for Division of Population Health and Disease Prevention; Francine Childs is Acting Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Youth Wellness and Community Health; and from our Division of Finance and Administration, we have Phyllis Lee, our Chief People Officer; Unya May Ekba, our Chief Financial Officer; Kelly Eastman, our Chief of Staff, Chief Operating Officer; and Julia Roche, our Director of Legislative Affairs. Again, I would like to thank you, Chair Costello, for this opportunity to present the Health Department's FY24 Budget. As a department, we continue to focus on our role as the local health authority to provide a healthier community where all Baltimoreans can thrive. This first slide is an overview of our agency. That is not an organizational chart, rather just, you know, the various components that make up the agency. In FY24, we do have some agency goals I would like to bring to your attention. One is to expand healthcare on the spot mobile, the buprenorphine program, and to plan for potential future opioid restitution funding through capacity building in the BCHD, and making recommendations to the city for governance of any funds that are received. We have another goal, to promote physical activity, social interaction, and wellness among older adults. We intend to expand wellness and recreational programming at each senior center, and we will be implementing telehealth pilot programs at two locations that will be determined at a future date. We have another goal, to reduce asthma disparities through expanded collaboration between school health, community organization, and the Health Department's Community Asthma or CAP program. We intend to increase referrals to that program and uptake of our evidence-based home visiting program. We have another goal, through an $8.4 million, five-year CDC Public Health Workforce and Infrastructure Grant, to augment recruitment and retention efforts and increase staff access to training and development. We will purchase a new contract and grant management system and implement a new electronic health records application. These are just some of the goals for FY24, just naming those as some highlights. On this first slide, I would like to begin with clinical services. This provides access to preventive healthcare, diagnosis, and treatment for city residents, and provides a safety net for the most vulnerable people in the city, including those without access to healthcare. The budget maintains the current level of service of approximately $20.8 million. Looking first, the performance measure for dental clinics. Visits in '22 were lower than our target due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and a workforce shortage, which included the vacancy of two dental assistance positions. Those have since been posted. But that did limit the number of available appointments. In addition, services remain limited due to one building. Traditionally, the program has been at two locations, not being yet open, but service were reestablished at that location in FY23. The dental program continues to prepare for expanded Medicaid coverage for adult dental care through additional hiring efforts. The adult dental Medicaid expansion is a win for many low-income Baltimore city residents who have been without or have had limited coverage since becoming adults. The expansion provides for basic services that will encourage adults to save rather than remove teeth, resulting in increased health benefits overall. We also saw an increase in client visits to our STD clinics in FY22, but we are not yet back to pre-pandemic levels. During the summer of 2022, the Sexual Health and Wellness Clinics played an important role as centers for MPOCs, monkey pox testing, and vaccination. When few clinical sites in Baltimore had this capacity, BCHD expects to be awarded additional funding from the CDC this summer to support clinical infrastructure for MPOCs. The next service is Service 305, Healthy Homes. This includes our lead and asthma programs, and the budget for this service is just under $6 million. From the data, we see that in-home inspections during FY21 and '22 continued to be negatively impacted by COVID and vacant sanitaryant positions. Despite continuous recruitment and increased partnerships with area schools, these positions have been difficult to fill. This is primarily due to position requirements, which include a BA that includes at least 30 credit semester hours in the sciences, physical, biological, or environmental, and at least one lab in chemistry and additional coursework in mathematics, as well as 24 months of experience. There are currently two vacant positions, but we do have one new hire who will be starting in June. We do anticipate meeting our targets in FY23 and '24. With regard to asthma, symptom improvement for children and asthma is influenced both by behavioral and environmental factors. As home visiting staff returned to in-person visits in '22, we were better able to assess and assist with the mitigation of in-home asthma triggers, providing a healthier environment for the person with asthma. In-person visits were also instrumental in the assessment and teaching of medication technique, which is a critical component of asthma management. Both saw improvement in this measure. Service 307, Substance Use Disorder and Mental Health, has a total budget of approximately $7 million. The recommended budget maintains the current level of service. BHSB is the city's local behavioral health authority, and they are the entity that provides oversight to the city's behavioral healthcare system. In FY22, COVID-19 continued to affect the Crisis Stabilization Center with declines in admissions, being loosely correlated with rises in reported cases of COVID-19 locally. However, operations continued uninterrupted, leading to an overall higher number of individuals served. And I do want to point out, had these individuals not been diverted from emergency rooms, that could have caused even more of a surge-capacity issue in our local hospitals and ERs. The number of mobile crisis team response calls increased in FY22, but were fewer than the goal of 2,500. I do want to say that a goal like this, one really doesn't want to achieve high numbers in crises, but what we do want is the capacity for the response. Several staff contracted COVID, which impacted capacity. In addition, the crisis unit experienced outbreaks that required decreasing bed capacity and temporarily suspending admissions in order to implement quarantine requirements. This particularly impacted referrals to the team from inpatient hospitals as a step-down option from inpatient care. BCHD partners with BHSB in a number of ways, such as through the city's opioid intervention team, a multi-agency group that develops the city's three-year strategic plan to address substance use disorder. As a department, we have secured an epidemiology fellow for the second year in a row through the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists that will be focused on analysis of opioid use disorder data. That individual will join us in a few weeks. The next service is Service 308, Maternal and Child Health, with a budget of a little over $29 million in FY24. The service operates programs to promote positive birth outcomes, including a nurse home visiting program, services to infants and toddlers identified with developmental delay, nutrition support, reproductive health services for teens and adults, and fetal infant child and maternal mortality reviews. Maternal and Child Health Home Visiting Services are now fully in-person, and we are completing the social-emotional development screenings at a 93% success rate, much better than what we anticipated when the fiscal year began, and we were still offering virtual services. We are providing families the education and/or making referrals to Baltimore infants and toddlers as appropriate based on the screening results. The Maternal and Infant Care Program, MCH, has had staff vacancies throughout the pandemic, and that resulted in missing our target for the number of unduplicated families receiving home visits. But we are now fully staffed and expect to reach our 24 target of 150 families. Some major accomplishments and successes over the past year. One is that we're now providing care coordination and linkage to community resources to 86% of pregnant people with Medicaid through the BHB centralized intake system, and we coordinated all seven birthing hospitals in the city to respond to an increase in sleep-related infant death, getting education and information about cribs out through every hospital, dozens of partners, and the media. We finalized our youth sexual health strategy for the city, hired a full new youth advisory council, and put in place a cross-agency coalition of citywide partnership set up to address needs of youth and sexuality. Next is School Health Services. This includes support of all the school health suites and school-based health centers in city schools. The recommended budget reflects transferring costs for the service from a special fund to the general fund. The total budget for the service is just over $22 million. The service continues to be jointly funded between the city and Baltimore City Public Schools, and in Fiscal '24, consistent with Fiscal '23, city schools will reimburse the city in an amount not to exceed $3 million towards the cost of new hires to increase nursing services at selected Baltimore City public schools. It is to be noted that health suite visits dropped significantly during the pandemic due to school closures, but are now on the increase as students have fully returned to full-time in-person learning. Although the return to class rate remains steady at 76% during FY22, fewer students are reporting to health suites with COVID-like symptoms, which would require them to be sent home. As such, the return to class rate is increasing as COVID community rates decrease. Health Services for Seniors, Service 311. These programs help older adults and persons with disabilities remain in their homes. Programs for this service area include home and community-based services under the Medicaid waiver program, as well as state adult education evaluation services and nurse monitoring. The recommended budget maintains the current level of service, and I should note that this is funded exclusively from a special revenue through Medicaid billing. As noted in the performance measures, which were updated in FY21, the percentage of individuals receiving initial contact with the Medicaid waiver team within seven days has stayed consistent throughout the years, and we continue to meet the state's requirement for completing pre-admission screening resident review evaluations within five days of a referral from hospitals or providers. The next service is Emergency Services, Health. This includes our Office of Acute Communicable Diseases and the Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response, as well as field health services. The budget for the service is approximately $42.5 million. As you can see, in FY20, '21, and '22, we performed significantly more outbreak investigations, including a hepatitis A outbreak that began in March of '20, COVID for the past three years, of course, and MPOCs in 2022. The percent of outbreaks with a confirmed etiology decreased from FY21, but remains above the target. This indicates a return to outbreak investigations other than COVID. To confirm, etiology requires a lab specimen test, and sometimes a specimen cannot be obtained for multiple reasons, including when symptoms resolve before a sample can be collected, or an affected case not wishing to provide a sample for testing. The Office of Acute Communicable Disease received a scholarship through the National Association of City and County Health Officers this spring to support training and certification for communicable diseases staff to become certified in infection prevention and control. Next, we have our Office of Youth and Trauma Services, with a recommended budget of approximately $4.8 million. This includes $628,000 in general fund support to continue the work around trauma-informed training for city staff. The budget includes contract funding for developing and delivering the training, and the creation of four positions at the Health Department to support this work. Looking at the number of victims served, there were 122 youth and families that were helped through the Youth Services and Advocacy Project. Of those, 68 were referred to mental health services, six received certifications in the medical field, and 43 received housing assistance and relocation services. This program is transitioning to MONZI for better service integration. Youth and Trauma Services has provided trauma training to 746 staff through our vendor, as well as by our staff. The Enik Pratt Library and 47 members of the Youth and Sexual Health Coalition and Core Implementation Team were trained. Most recently, our team trained 16 staff from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Office of African-American Male Engagement, Community Affairs, Office of Neighborhoods, and City Schools, who will be participating in the curfew engagement process. The program recently submitted a grant to support violence prevention in city schools. The next service is Administration Health. This includes our executive leadership team, external affairs, our entire fiscal services department, human resources, facilities and maintenance, grants and policy development, and epidemiology and planning. This administration provides departmental leadership. It facilitates and guides the agency's delivery of services. The recommended budget for this service is $13.3 million, which includes $160,000 for security at the city's health clinic location, as well as funds for position creation. There are no performance measures associated with the service as these positions and offices are focused on supporting the administrative efforts of the agency. The next service is Animal Services, which includes our Office of Animal Control, as well as Baltimore Animal Rescue and Care Shelter. The recommended budget is $3.7 million, which reflects an increase in the city's contribution for barks by 120,000, or 9%. This funding increase will support additional security services at the location. As we look at the measures, we see the animal enforcement officers continue to have 100% closed-on-time rate for the top five priority services, which include animal in danger, an animal attack against a human or other animal, an aggressive animal, and police standby calls for assistance. The number of animals entering the shelter has declined over the past years, but there was an increase in FY22 as resources in the community were limited due to the COVID pandemic and the lack of veterinary professionals available to care for all of the sick and injured animals. Thank you. I think we may have skipped one service. Is it possible to go back one? I think the delay finally kicked in. The slide just prior to this, Environmental Inspection Services. Oh, okay. Thank you. Environmental Inspection Services. This is... Environmental Inspection Services protects public health by conducting inspections of food service facilities and other establishments to ensure compliance with state and local health codes. The recommended budget of $3.1 million maintains the current level of service. In looking at the performance measures, we see the average number of days to receive a final plan review inspection after the request has been made stayed low at one day for the past two fiscal years. We anticipate that number of new businesses or change of ownership of facilities will increase in the post-COVID world as the economy gets back on track, so that number of days may increase. The measure for total number of inspections at a food service facility is actually a new measure that gives a broader representation of the inspections being conducted by the Food Control Section. It not only includes routine inspections, but all food complaints, fire investigations, and foodborne outbreak investigations. Our Office of Chronic Disease Prevention engages and empowers individuals and communities to choose healthy behaviors and make changes to reduce the risk of developing chronic diseases and other morbidities, focusing primarily on smoking cessation and diabetes prevention. The budget for the service is approximately $2.8 million. This service includes virtual supermarket and tobacco enforcement. In FY22, the virtual supermarket fell short of its target of 620 unique clients due to the prevailing COVID restrictions at the VSM sites. These restrictions were a consequence of the pandemic. They had unforeseen impacts on the program's reach. However, in response to the setback, the virtual supermarket has taken proactive measures to overcome the challenges. It has expanded the program by introducing three new sites, namely Weinberg South, Weinberg East, and Weinberg West. These additions aim to enhance accessibility and accommodate a larger clientele, thereby strengthening the virtual supermarket's presence and impact. In FY22, with regards to tobacco. In FY22, the annual guidelines determine the percentage of outlets to be covered. Baltimore has approximately 1,100 tobacco retailers, and for jurisdictions with over 250 outlets, the threshold was set at 70%. The Maryland Department of Health establishes the tobacco enforcement targets primarily in response to this significant number of tobacco retailers. We have one officer for education and one for compliance. The number decreased by about 4%. Part of our program involves youth, and some of the parents were not yet comfortable with their children assisting in this project and going into the retail stores. We expect this to improve in the coming fiscal year. Next slide, please. Could you please go back one? Thank you. It will be HIV treatment services for the uninsured. Just keep going, okay. For HIV treatment services for the uninsured, this service includes HIV treatment and prevention, community risk reduction services, including the syringe exchange program, provision of case management to residents living with AIDS, and our Ryan White program, which supports comprehensive care for HIV-positive residents. The recommended budget maintains the current level of service. Through this program, we have been able to achieve a viral suppression rate of 90% among the residents we serve, which is higher than the national average of all living with HIV, which is 66%, and all Ryan White programs, which is approximately 85%. In FY22, the percent of clients achieving an undetectable viral load was 87%. Viral load suppression means the endpoint of HIV treatment and care, as individuals with an undetectable viral load are unable to transmit the HIV virus. The percent of newly diagnosed HIV-positive clients who were interviewed for partner service has increased to 87%. The Partner Services team is continuing to recover from COVID. The staff on the Partner Services team formed the basis of the initial COVID response, given their training in case investigation and contact tracing. Staff continue to return from COVID duties through FY22. Other challenges included the cyber incident, which impacted the Maryland Department of Health in December of '21, which, of course, impacted our software and data system that we use for that program. The team needed to shift to a paper system and then created an in-house data system. The team remains short-staffed, but recruiting continues. Next, I will turn to our senior centers. Services that provide support for our older adults. We operate seven senior centers and provide funding and technical assistance to another six, which are nonprofits. The recommended budget for this service is just over $5 million. This includes an enhancement of $400,000 to create seven positions to support programming across all of the centers. The senior center activities reflected in our performance measures include activities in all 13 centers in the city. You will notice a drop in the numbers during the pandemic, where many older adults were isolating at home, but it was not as significant as it might have been because programming still continued virtually, telephonically, and outdoors. The centers also served as mail delivery sites throughout COVID. We have seen an increase in participation in FY23 as programming has resumed in person. The next service is Administration Care. BCHD serves as the designated area agency on aging for Baltimore City. The service area is not general funded. Rather, we receive funding from the Older Americans Act through the Maryland Department of Aging to plan and coordinate a comprehensive service system for older adults. Most of the funding for this service area is administrative expenses and has been consolidated with Service 715, Administration Health. The remaining funding in the service area is a federal grant to provide administrative support, and it will be consolidated with Service 715 in the future. There are no performance measures associated with this service. Continuing with Advocacy for Seniors, this service area provides advocacy, information, referrals, benefits guidance, and volunteer services to older adults, their families, caregivers, and adults with disabilities. The recommended budget of about $1.4 million maintains the current level of service, and the service area focuses on connecting older adult residents to services and the number of calls received through Maryland Access Point. It is a new measure, but data prior to its becoming a reported-on-data point indicated that above 23,000 calls were received annually. The number of calls during COVID was exceptionally high due to older adults calling about vaccine, and the subsequent year returned to a more expected call volume. Additionally, you will see an increase in the number of complaints investigated in long-term care facilities, has increased through the years, and we attribute these to increases in the growing number of assisted-living facilities in the city. Continuing with direct care and support planning, this service provides support and direct care to cognitively impaired, disabled, and chronically ill adults. The programs include our Adult Public Guardianship Program and Senior Care Program, which offers stopgap services for older adults to age in place. Its recommended budget of approximately $3 million consists of a $450,000 increase in state grant funding based on reducing the senior care services waitlist. You will notice in these performance measures that the number of newly appointed guardianship wards increased during the pandemic in FY20 and '21 and are leveling off again in FY22. We believe this is due to reduced need. The second performance measure of senior companion hours provided annually is slowly coming back to pre-pandemic numbers as older residents are again comfortable with having senior companions in their homes, and we are having more success with recruiting volunteers. This program does rely on volunteers, and it was very challenging to recruit during the pandemic. Lastly, we have Community Services for Seniors. These programs address core needs, including nutrition, transportation, and health education and promotion. Most programs in the service area were delivered through provider contracts. The service's recommended budget of approximately $5.8 million includes an increase of $695,000 in grant funding. The growth is based on anticipated state grants that will be received in Fiscal '24. In the first performance measure of seniors receiving home meals, this increased significantly during the pandemic, and we were able to meet and continue to meet the needs with emergency funding from FEMA and ARPA. Use of our taxi subsidies has steadily increased by about 300 users each year, including during COVID, pointing to the continuing need for this service. I'd like to thank the council for their attention, and if there are any questions, we are happy to take those questions now.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee; Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District. I think this one's for the Budget Director, Service 310. I think this one's for the Budget Director, Service 310. I know we mentioned there was a transition from the funding from the special fund to the general fund. What's, what are we referring to when we say special fund here?
Historically, the, the budget for this, for the school health service was, most of the staff was sitting in a special fund, and this service is jointly funded between the city, and then the school district provides $3 million. So what we did was we had all the expenses sitting in the special fund. The city would send its share, the school would send its $3 million to the special fund, and there were a series of, of sort of transfers built into the city budget. What we ended up doing, because that was sort of unnecessarily confusing in terms of the structure of how that was built, we ended up sort of collapsing, getting rid of the special fund and moving all of those positions into the general fund. We still realize that $3 million of cost sharing from the schools, it's just not, it doesn't have to necessarily be reflected here in this, in that accounting arrangement. So again, this was more of a change to simplify the accounting for the service.
So is city schools still contributing $3 million?
They are.
Back to the city?
They are, yes.
Okay. And then Service 715 Administration, forgive me if you talked about this, there's an increase in 10 positions. Can you talk through what that is?
Those are positions that were created mid-year in fiscal '23, so post the adoption of this year's budget. The, the bulk of the, the new positions were, are funded by various federal grants that are received by the Health Department. The, the net increase of three positions in the general fund, that is related to creating positions mid-year in fiscal '23. So they created a, a special assistant to the Health Commissioner and then two operations officers.
Thank you. Can you talk about what the other seven grant-funded positions, what their functionality is?
I would defer that question to the, the Health Department team.
Thank you. So I'm on page 215 of Volume 1, Service 715 Administration. The summary table at the top, there are 57 general fund-funded positions, increase of three. I'm curious what the increase from four to 11 federally funded positions, what the functionality of those positions is.
To defer to our Chief of Staff, Kelly Eastman.
Also been joined by CA Leach.
Hello. Hello. Kelly Eastman, Chief of Staff at the Baltimore City Health Department. I can't tell specifically what this, which grants these are, but I would assume this is from our, for our public health infrastructure grant that we recently received last year. This is $8.4 million from the CDC to help increase the size and capability of the public health workforce. I can go into more detail about what that's being spent on, but that's where we put in a lot of new staff this year.
Nope, that's sufficient. Thank you very much. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my first question, one, thank you all for joining us and for all that you do. I know that the public health workforce has been a challenge in the last few years. I know that you all are drained and still tired from the peak of the pandemic, and so I want to thank you for all that you have, did to navigate the city through that and your leadership, but sticking it out as we move forward with new crises that need public health intervention. So thank you all. The first was around Service 308, maternal health. Does any of the funding or funding sources go towards doula services? We know that recovery rates for women and children increase with the support of doulas, and is, so is this something that the Health Department invests in or could? Or are there other partners that you work with to increase access to doula services?
Thank you for the question. I would like to defer to our Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health, Rebecca Deneen.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. That on. I'm Rebecca Deneen, Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health. We are very supportive of doula services, and it's an integrated part of our comprehensive care system for maternal and child health for pregnant women and women immediately postpartum. We have partners that we fund through the Be More Healthy Babies Initiative. We also support in advocacy ways and through helping doula services get reimbursed through Medicaid. That's a big area of effort for ours in this fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you. How are we doing questions, Mr. Chair? Do you go? Two? Okay. So the, and this is more of a, just an agency request, but I'll submit it as a question. So our office created a mold task force that meets bi-monthly to address the health impacts of exposure to mold. Last budget session, we asked the Health Department to explore potential health campaigns for exposure to moist conditions and toxic mold conditions. Has the Health Department begun to think about like public messaging or public messaging campaign around this? And if not, as a request, could we, you know, work, work on something together and integrate some of the work that the task force has been doing to try and build out a public awareness campaign? Mold, as you know, is a very pervasive issue in Baltimore City. It's something that my office has, on several instances, received calls about from constituents living in mold conditions in their apartments and other, and other workspaces. And so we know it's something that, and we also deal with a lot of flooding and flood mitigation work in my district. So it's something that's top of mind, and so, but we also realize that a lot of people don't really know the health impacts of it, and there's not really any sort of large-scale conversations that are happening. And so, wanted to talk about the work that the Health Department's doing and any consideration for a public awareness campaign.
At present, we don't have a public awareness campaign planned, and this is primarily because of the difficulty in any kind of established standard for when mold is dangerous, to whom it poses a threat. Nationally, there are no standards. Different people react to mold exposure differently. Some are not affected at all. Some, particularly those with pre-existing commission, conditions such as asthma, can be triggered by mold. In our program of healthy homes, where we do home visiting, we talk with the families, we work with asthma triggers, and we can certainly look to that program to see what might be possible by way of a campaign. But it's more of an awareness to make people aware of the possibility of a danger, that if they see it in their home, that they should reach out to us, and then we can connect them with housing, who can do a home inspection, and look to have the mold remediated. Fortunately, because there is, are still a lot of unknowns around this issue, the state legislature in the past session passed a bill to form a state task force and work group around the issue, to look at, to look at the issue intensely with experts from across the state. The view to possibly having legislation that would require, you know, certain remediation or certainly to require some kind of licensure, you know, for that, all of those things are going to be brought, brought into that task force. So at this point, we're looking more to what the results of that effort is going to be from those experts.
Okay. And we'll, we'll follow up on that to, to continue this conversation.
And we're happy to continue the conversation, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Commissioner, and do want to concur with my colleague around just thanking the Health Department. We know these were probably some of the toughest years for health departments across the country, experiencing the pandemic and monkeypox and rise in violence and everything else, and Baltimore, I think, handled it really well. And when we look at comparable cities in America, our transmission and death rates were much lower, and I think that is a large credit to you all and the folks that stuck in it. And so, special thank you to Deputy Mayor Girasa, you know, Mary Beth, and the team. Just want to say, I really appreciate all that you do and continue to do. Also want to acknowledge and thank you for working in really good faith with Vice President Sharon Green Milton and I to reestablish a separate Office of Aging outside of the Health Department. Want to thank Commissioner Tan for the great work that she does within the Health Department, and appreciate the, that this is going to be a complimentary effort and that we're going to work closely together. And so, again, thank you to you, to City Administrator Faith Leach, and to the folks who've been working with us on that. I think our seniors really deserve both. Also, final thank you for ongoing work around the Healing City Act. That is a big, big, big lift, and I do appreciate some of the complexity and working on contracts with vendors and the inter-agency collaboration that it's taken. It's a lot, so I really, again, appreciate the Health Department. I want to just ask for the record, and this is something I've asked in previous years, what percentage of the Health Department's budget is provided by the General Fund of the City of Baltimore versus what percent is either state or federal or grant-funded?
Thank you for the question. I would defer to BBMR to respond on the percent, on the percentages.
So in, based off of the BOE recommended budget for fiscal '24, the Health Department's total budget is $233.9 million. The General Fund is $48.6 million, so that's 20% of the Health Department's budget in fiscal '24 will be coming from the General Fund.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I continue to believe that we need to support more of our own Health Department. I think that the work you all do is extraordinary. I think that we've seen in the past couple of years the importance of public health in Baltimore and across the United States, and I think it's a shame that we only do 20% of our own budget. And I appreciate all the grants and the state and federal funds that come in, but I just fundamentally believe that if we are truly to be a great public health city, which I think we are, and we have great hospitals and great medical institutions and great partners in this work and a great Health Department, then we, the city government, need to do more to support from a budget perspective. My next question is about behavioral and mental health. Last year, the council fought really hard to get some money over to Baltimore Crisis Response. We know that we are continuing to see a pretty profound mental health crisis. We continue to see very high rates of overdose deaths, homicide, suicide, interpersonal violence. You know, the city, I think, has been doing a lot around substance misuse disorder, been really proud of the peer navigators in the library system, which was partly spurred by the Health Department and the work we did with them. But I, I am just interested in if someone could articulate the value proposition of BHSP, Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, and help me understand why we continue to essentially contract out our behavioral and mental health services? And then specifically around Baltimore Crisis Response, asked this to Monty last night, but, you know, we did increase their budget somewhat substantially last year using, I think, ARPA funds, and so I'm interested to see whether that service has improved, because I think, again, the mental health crisis in this city and in this country has not gone away. In fact, I think it's worsened recently. And so, what are we getting for using Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore? And has the money toward BCRI really improved outcomes?
Thank you for the question. We have a representative from Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore here with us today. Stacy Jefferson is their Director of Policy and Stakeholder Engagement, and I would like to defer to the question to Stacy.
Wait, hang on. You're not at BHSP? Okay. Sorry, I got a little confused. It's good to see you, Stacy.
Good to see you. Stacy Jefferson, again, Director of Policy and Stakeholder Engagement. Thank you for having me today. So, to both questions, I'll start with the question around BCRI. So there's a lot of things going on right now with our crisis services. There is an expansion, as you know, in addition to those ARPA funds, there is also funds to be able to expand crisis service regionally. And so, recently, the Regional Call Center has been up and running. And basically, what that does and the opportunity that is there is that we are partnering with counties, Howard County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and others, and the Regional Call Center is allowing for, particularly around things like when there's a, a need for a mobile crisis team. If the Baltimore City Crisis Team is not available, then we are able to call on other crisis teams that maybe other county crisis teams are able to respond to Baltimore City Crisis.
Is that G-Bricks?
Yes, that is the, historically known as the G-Bricks Project. And so, but it really is an expansion of our crisis services. And so, we've also been able to, in addition to that, been able to increase our awareness of 988. And as we know, that is the number that folks are able to call, the easy three-digit number when they are looking for assistance. And so, we also work with BCRI and have been going out into the community, been doing a lot of outreach at various events throughout the city and working with them to, again, increase the visibility of 988. And so, those are some of the things that's been happening. We have seen an increase in calls as we continue to come out of COVID. Throughout that time period, we have seen calls increase for services and people just looking for people to talk to, people looking to be connected to mental health and substance use treatment, and so much of those funds are used to assist with that. And then the other question around our relationship with the Health Department and sort of our role and why our role is the way it is. So much of the funding for behavioral health, as you know, is the state system, is a state-driven system. Many of the providers, so we oversee the public system, which means many of the providers are paid through billing, through Medicaid, and then also there are state grant funds. And so, we act as the pass-through entity for that funding, and then we do also oversee that service. So we work with the state and to also ensure quality of services. We respond to complaints, and we're able to do that. The other additional part to that is we are also able to advocate at the state level. So by being a nonprofit organization, it really gives us also the opportunity to be able to advocate for system change as well. And that is something else that we do at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. We do advocate at the state level, and we do some federal-level advocacy, and as you know, city level as well. And so, those are some of the benefits of having the system the way it is. Again, it's such a state-driven system, much of the funding does come from the state, and so that is a big part of the role that we play, is that partnership with the state.
No, and I appreciate that, and that is sort of why I always ask that first question around us needing to do more for our own city from a budget perspective. And, and again, I appreciate, Ms. Jefferson, your work and your partnership, but I guess could you be a little more specific? But I guess, could you be a little more specific about outcomes? Knowing that we have a real crisis around not enough psychiatric hospital beds being available to folks that, again, I still think, even though I appreciate the work on disseminating 988, I think the vast majority of Baltimoreans still don't know it exists. Some of that's on us, but it's reality. We're continuing to see really, really high rates of overdose deaths from fentanyl, from heroin. So, could you talk about just sort of specific outcome measures that Behavioral Health System Baltimore has accomplished within our city over the last year?
So, I can't get too specific numbers, but I can say there's several initiatives. And so, one is, for example, you mentioned overdose and the overdose crisis. We have continued to increase the naloxone, naloxone training and education in the community. We have a team, Be More Power. And like I said, I can share exactly how much the distribution of naloxone was in the community. In addition to that, around education, we've also increased the education around xylazine, which you all may have heard has been increasing in the drug supply. And we've been seeing as an increasing problem and continue with the public health crisis. In addition to that, as it comes to our services around our 988 and our crisis services, we can share data with you around the calls and the increasing calls and response and calls that we've seen as well. And when it comes to mental health and substance use disorder services, again, that is a state-driven system. But we do have an example of a report, and I could probably share that with you. We do have an impact report that does have a lot of information around some of the initiatives and things that we're doing to continue to also increase awareness around mental health treatment and substance use disorder treatment as well.
Yeah, no, and again, I do appreciate that. I would very much appreciate some specific data. I do see and hear some performance measures around the mobile crisis team response and the stabilization center. But beyond those outputs, I'm interested in how many folks are we actually serving? What have been the longer-term outcomes? Have we, are we reducing deaths from substance misuse disorder? Are we connecting people into treatment? Are we mitigating when BCRI goes out there? What has been sort of the overall outcomes in terms of preventing hostile police encounters or preventing further escalation? Those are some of the outcomes that I'm interested in and would love to hear a little bit more from Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore about sort of how we're doing on the trajectory. Because, again, looking just at what's in the budget book, it's good, some outputs, but still not clear on kind of what it all means and where it's going. And given that you all are the pass-through, and again, I acknowledge it is primarily state money, I just think it's incredibly important.
Okay, and I could follow up with you about the specific outcomes that you're looking for and get some of that data to you.
That would be great. Could you do that in the next three weeks?
I'm pretty sure. Yes.
Okay.
Tiffany, you got that? Thank you. I've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, Sixth District Member of the Committee. Madam Vice President, floor is yours.
Or we can, we could circle back if you want to come back to you. You were just up in the...
Thank you. Soon as you walked in, it was perfect timing.
I'm sure this was said, but first of all, I just want to thank you all and your department. I know you don't get thank yous enough. Your services are very important to the city and truly appreciate everything that you do. You know, you're, you're one of the most important departments in the city along with our Office of Family and Children's Success. You're, you're kind of connected by the hip with everything that goes on within that department as well. And a special shout-out and thank you for the continued understanding and need for, and I'm sure this was probably mentioned by my colleague of the First District, but that partnership in really trying to get our aging population the help that they continue to need in this city. We continue to focus on youth, which is very important as well. But connecting with our older adults and trying to maintain that intergenerational connection is very, very important as, as we move forward. So, all, I truly appreciate everything that all of you do. And I guess I'll start off with this question. I know you also handle animal services. And I bring this up because I had a, I guess, a personal situation where a baby deer kind of settled in my, in a corner of my front lawn, basically dying and finally died. And I, just going through that, of course, Animal Services came and got the information and so on. But it just, I, if someone can just kind of explain, are there any new performance measures or any new things that's happening with that office? You know, through COVID, the animal population has kind of changed and grown and through the city as well, deers and all sorts of animals are just popping up everywhere. I talked with Housing about this garage issue, where there's all these abandoned garages. Some are owned privately, some are owned by city. Different kind of rodents are all up in these garages. They're so terrible, they can't be boarded. There's, there's a community that, a whole block, they have to like put cages in their yard. They can't do things in their backyard. So, is, is the animal services 24 hours? Do you need more money to, you know? Do you need people to help with the services? Could someone kind of give us an update and speak on that office?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Middleton. I, I first want to separate out the garage issue and the rats that you were mentioning. Rat eradication, I want to separate that from the Office of Animal Control, which is primarily around animal rescue. DPW has the program that does rat eradication, so they would be handling those kinds of issues. In terms of other programs and, you know, when you have an animal that, that dies in the backyard or the like, the, we used to have a service in 2013, and it was called Dead Animal Pickup. There were two drivers that operated in that service in the Office of Animal Control. It was really primarily to assist residents where their own pet had died, and they would be able to pick up that animal. Or when an animal was in the public way, like obstructing traffic and posing a threat, you know, or impeding traffic or, or the like. Since the elimination of that service, what ends up happening is that the, we still have it in 311. But what we end up doing is, once we meet all of the higher priority calls, where you've got an animal who's actually injured and suffering, which would be a much higher priority call than a dead animal pickup, you know, we'll find a day, and then the officers will go around and try and catch up on those services. Animal Control is the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week service. We don't perform all of the activities overnight because some of them involve, you know, going to people's homes, knocking on doors. Those kinds of activities would not be happening at night. But if there was an emergent issue, we do have an officer who would be able to go at night. And our office is, you know, does run on that schedule, including holidays and the like. We also have, the Animal Control Director, Sharon Miller, is here if you would like to hear any more detail about any of those services. Okay. Director Miller, I would like to defer to you for some additional detail.
Hi. Good morning. So, yes, we are 24/7. We do have to triage our calls. So, when it comes to calls like wildlife, typically healthy wildlife, we don't intervene with a baby deer. It's that time of year, the mom usually tries to leave it in a safe spot. We tell people, you know, wait a day, mama will probably come back. Sometimes that doesn't happen. We have to go and remove it, or unfortunately, it does expire and is deceased, and we have to pick it up. The majority of our calls that we're responding to are police standbys, animal attacks, animals that have been hit by a car or abused and neglected. So, these are our higher priority calls that our officers are constantly going to from call to call. So, we do have lower priority calls like dead animal pickup, unsanitary conditions, and barking complaints that we can sometimes lack in responding to at an appropriate time, especially during the summer warmer months when our call volume increases. So, we are limited in good response times to our lower priority calls. But with our higher priority calls, we have a pretty good response time. Yes, so we have a total of 20. 15 field officers, supervisory staff, a bite animal attack investigator, and an office manager. So, we have 15 that are responding to 20,000 calls a year, 24/7. Yes, ma'am?
Councilwoman Mike.
Whoops. We have a lot of parks that are near homes. As I mentioned, suburbia, city, really, a unique, Baltimore is a very unique place. And I guess, to just, along a follow-up with that, so there is, do you participate in outreach at community fairs and so on of the help that you do?
So, occasionally, we're asked to come to community meetings. And we will send a representative to a community meeting. But yes, there are a lot of wildlife encounters. And being in a city, especially in a wooded area, can be concerning to people. So, our supervisory staff is there during regular business hours to call and talk through those issues. And then, yes, we do get, we do get to go to some community meetings.
Thank you for that, for that information. Our environment is changing so much, and this is just good information that we need to just keep out there in the public. So, appreciate your details.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. CA Leach, I forgot to bring this up during DPW. Can we talk again, as we do annually every year, about whether or not it's possible to start a service to pick up dead rats? Okay. Can we talk about it now? Or, yeah, we don't have to, we can find another time if I...
So, in DPW's follow-up request, I will ask them to provide just details about their cleanup process. But I do want to take a moment to highlight the folks that lead the Rat Abatement Team at DPW. I was out with DPW maybe about a month or two ago. And they actually deploy their, I think they call it right rat wipeout is the name of the program. And it's their rat abatement program. And they actually go out and they treat vacant lots. Residents can actually call 311 or file a 311 request to, to request the rat abatement service. So, I do want to just take a second to acknowledge that team. But as far as pickup, cleaning, and disposal, I will ask DPW to submit a formal response to that question.
Thank you. And that's Toya Sykes Coats Crew, the Rat Rub Out at DPW?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, those folks are amazing. Appreciate you highlighting that.
And, well, and the reason why I highlighted it is because as a part of our sprint, they asked to be a part of the next wave because they want more residents to reach out and request the service.
Amazing. My dog has eight lifetime kills, so glad to do my small part to contribute. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I wanted to, in the Fire Department hearing, we were told that if there were multiple overdoses, opioid overdoses at a particular address, that they work with you all to formulate a response. Can you speak to, or someone speak to, what that sort of coordinated response looks like? And I'll just add context that we gave the Fire Department that there is a few locations in my district where we've had repeated incidents where the Fire Department is showing up over and over and over again. These are group living facilities where it's supposed to be recovery. There's at least one that we suspect that the drug dealers have some sort of relationship with the operator. Obviously, we can't prove that yet. But the complaint from the constituents in the block is that there's repeated overdoses in a space that's supposed to be like a recovery space. And so, what's going on there? Essentially, where, obviously overdoses can happen, but if there's like repeated, you know, to that same house multiple times a week, obviously, there's some, some challenges with care that the person, the people may be receiving. And so, we were told that there is a sort of coordinated response with the Health Department. And can you, I guess, speak to what that response looks like?
Thank you for the question. I would like to defer the question to Deputy Commissioner Jennifer Martin.
Good morning, Chair and Councilmembers. So, in the Health Department, we do analyze data that we receive from the Fire Department around non-fatal overdoses. And we do have a program where when we analyze the data and when there are spikes and overdoses that are happening in the same area within a certain period of time, we do send out alerts to some of our community-based partners, our other syringe exchange programs in the city and others, so that folks can be deployed out to do community education and outreach. And I believe that is the program that the Fire Department was referring to.
Yeah, so I'm familiar with the, with that, and I've seen the alerts go out on social media. I think I follow one of the accounts that promotes that. What we're, what we're really trying to get at is, so a lot of like recovery homes or group living facilities have to get like a conditional use, like this is special zoning and permitting designation to operate. We, and some of those are providers where, again, it could be folks that are in recovery or some sort of other, receiving some other sort of service. Are, if, in that instance, obviously, there's concerns that are raised about the conditions that people are living in or the quality of service that the operator is providing. Again, we've had calls, one inside my district, one outside, where the families were concerned that like drug deals were happening inside of the recovery house. And so, that was, they felt we're driving the repeated overdoses because of the operator themselves. And so, we're not so much saying like if, if there's a particularly bad batch of fentanyl, I've seen those alerts go out. But if you're repeatedly coming to a particular service provider over and over again, does that trigger an investigation from the Health Department to look at, okay, what's going on with this particular facility in which this isn't a space that we expect to have multiple repeated overdoses, fatal or non-fatal, from a place that is supposed to be helping people recover? Does that raise any flags within the department?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that clarification. So, the Health Department does not have an oversight role over any healthcare facility at all, any type of healthcare facility. I would like to maybe ask our colleague from BHSP, Stacy Jefferson, to come I would like to maybe ask our colleague from BHSB, Stacy Jefferson, to come up. BHSB does have some authority to investigate complaints, and we have worked with them on several over the past year. But they also, you know, they have a limited authority as well, because many of these recovery programs are not, they don't actually require, many of them do not require any kind of certification or licensure. But Stacy, I don't know if there's anything you would want to add?
Yeah, so just to expand on that, what often happens is that many of these recovery homes or group homes are unlicensed. And so we oversee the actual residential service programs. They are certified licensed, they're licensed residential programs in the community. Those are different from recovery homes. So there's two types. There are certified recovery homes that fall under what's called MCOR, that's the Maryland Recovery Homes, and the state oversees those. But then there are many, unfortunately, of recovery homes, group homes, transitional-type homes that do not have oversight because they are not required to be certified. And so we will oftentimes get, sometimes when people aren't sure of what category they fall in, and we'll check to see if they fall within the scope of our work, but oftentimes, they do not. Sometimes we're still able to, if people are in that place, be able to work with like housing to see if we can help to transfer people to appropriate levels of care. But it really is oftentimes, we'll have to work with the city to really respond to that. And oftentimes, we do that with housing because they aren't programs that we oversee.
And what is the housing, like, are you working with code enforcement? Like, what is that, when you say you're working with housing?
A lot of times, it's like code enforcement. Sometimes if there's, it's mostly code enforcement, I'll say. There may be zoning issues sometimes, but oftentimes, it's code enforcement.
So if there are unlicensed facility, there's just no oversight by anybody?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again to the health department for all the work you're doing. I want to ask about noise violations. I've found that the system around noise violations has some gaps. Folks will do a 311 and not know what's going on, the ticket will get closed. There's often a delay for the inspectors to go out. It's a little unclear if there is found to be a noise violation, what the penalty is going to be, as well as what constitutes a noise violation. So I was hoping you could walk us through the process, starting with when someone files a 311, what all that looks like, all the way through what the penalty is.
Noise violations can be a bit complicated because there are different laws that apply depending on what the type of noise is. For example, there might be home repair noise that someone is doing on the weekend, you know, using a saw or something like that, or other equipment. There is also amplified sound, where you have entertainment noise that may be emanating from, you know, from a local establishment, you know, on a Friday night. There is vehicular noise where radio is playing loud. All of these different types of noise violations are all handled differently, and not all by the health department. It's a combination of health and police. So it's very much contingent on, if it is within our arena. Some noise violations require, you know, just a discernment of can you hear it from a certain number of feet from a property line? Others require an actual decibel measure. Again, it all is contingent on the kind of noise that it is. So there are certain ones that we can respond to, certain ones that we can't and don't have the authority in the health code. There are penalties in the health code. They can, people can be cited. But again, it's all going to be very, it has to meet the specific criteria for what that violation is, and then either exceed the levels based on, again, the decibel, the zoning, and a number of factors. Actually, I'll ask our Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health, Jessica Speaker, to come up, and she can, you know, maybe explain in a little more detail. But this is part of why when we get a noise violation, it's, there's kind of an analysis that we actually go through to determine the next step.
Hi, good morning. Jessica Speaker, Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health. So I know we've actually dealt, Councilman Cohen, with a number of noise violations in your district. We are not a 24/7 operation for our inspectors. They work usual city hours. We do get some volunteers to work in the evening sometimes. If it's a noise complaint about a food truck, specifically an ice cream truck, they are always very hard to find. Clearly, they move from place to place, but we often reach out directly to the owner and have them bring their truck to the health department, and we measure the volume that way using the decibel meters. They are issued a violation notice first, they're able to correct the violation, and then if the problem continues, then we issue citations. Citations range from $100 to $500. So we do issue the citations based on that. The amplified sound is very hard to deal with if it's reported at 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. BPD usually responds to those. They should be asking folks to turn the volume down. We also get a lot of complaints about what we casually refer to as people noise. So the bar is let out, everybody's outside, everybody's yelling, screaming, having a good time, continuing the party. We can't enforce that as a, that's people noise. There's no violation for that. That's more a crowd control issue.
No, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the complexity of it. And where I think there's frustration, at least on my end, on behalf of my constituents, is both when we have persistent party houses where every Friday, Saturday night, sometimes they're Airbnb, sometimes they're not, but there's sort of a consistent pattern where folks are having parties, and it's very loud, and it's a disturbance to the neighbors, and the neighbors call 311 and call 911. And it doesn't seem like effective, appropriate action is taken. And I know, Ms. Speaker, you've been on email chains where we've had both community association representatives and individual neighbors saying, we keep calling this in and nothing seems to be happening because the problem persists. That's one major challenge. And then, and you mentioned this, but, you know, issues where we have a DJ or a street performer and, you know, love street music, love busking, love the whole scene, but when it is too loud, when there's amp, when it's beyond what is legally permitted, again, it becomes a quality-of-life challenge for our communities. And there has, again, not been, in my mind, just a clear response or set of protocols for what happens. And so what I'm interested in, Commissioner Howler, and maybe the city administrator, and Ms. Speaker, and others, is I think we need to tighten up a bit when it comes to noise violations. I think there needs to be more clarity for the council, for constituents, on this is what the response is. And again, totally respect and understand that the inspectors work city hours, but the partying is happening, and happening on city hours, happening at 10:00 p.m., 11:00 p.m., midnight, 1:00, and so on. And so I think that represents a real challenge for this program generally. So I would ask you all to go back and come up with a tighter set of protocols and just more clarity for what is going to happen in these cases, because I do think it detracts from quality of life in many of our communities and frustrates people. And I have seen residents move out because they were fed up. So that would be my request to you all, maybe within the next month, to come back with just some clarity around guidelines and policy and how we can be a little more effective when it comes to enforcing our noise ordinance. And I realize this is probably an interagency conversation with BPD as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
Jessica, sorry. Can you provide an update on the noise investigation into the vicinity chilled water plant on Frederick Street?
The, what do, the chilled water?
Vicinity, like the steam energy provider? They have a chilled water plant on the unit block of South Frederick Street?
I would have to look into that one.
Okay. Yeah, if you can have someone give me an update by the end of the week, please, and thank you. Thank you. You good? Council vice president Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my next question is about tuberculosis. I know I, periodically, we hear outbreaks really around the country. Have there been any outbreaks in our city? And is, do you offer free testing, or do they have to go to places like, you know, Walgreens and CVS to get the free tests? I know tuberculosis is prevalent with individuals that have HIV or very small children. Are you, is there an update in our city of, with that particular communicable disease?
Thank you for the question. Jennifer Martin, our Deputy Commissioner over that program, will respond.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'm going to ask our Assistant Commissioner, Dr. Greenbaum, to perhaps come up. But I'll start by saying that, yes, we have a TB clinic and a TB program in our health department. And we are very busy and very active with a lot of screening and testing, as well as ensuring that there is medication adherence for individuals who have TB living in our city. We are seeing, I think, an increase in exposures, and we have had a number of outbreaks recently. And so we are a busy program, and screening is important. We work really closely, you know, people contract TB primarily through travel. And so we do work very closely with some of our immigrant communities and refugee communities to ensure that there's screening for individuals who are coming to Baltimore. But I'll also turn it to Dr. Greenbaum to answer perhaps some of your more clinical questions, should you have them.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Adina Greenbaum, Assistant Commissioner for Clinical Services and HIV and STI Prevention. Thank you for asking about tuberculosis, certainly an issue that remains at the forefront of our public health response and preparedness for the city. We do, so tuberculosis is nationally a required reportable disease. So we do get all cases of tuberculosis, of city residents that are diagnosed, reported both to the state and to the city health department. We do follow the treatment of all individuals who are diagnosed with tuberculosis and oversee that treatment directly through, through the health department. And as Deputy Commissioner Martin mentioned, work closely with our partners across the city who interact with those individuals and groups who might be at higher risk for exposure through a variety of reasons to increase awareness, to increase, to make sure individuals are tested and screened. Tuberculosis is not something that you can go to a CVS or Walgreens to, generally speaking, to get tested, really involves testing more in a medical, in a medical setting.
Thank you. Yeah, I particularly can't, do, do they still do the, that test in your arm with that thing? I can't get that. My whole arm like swells up, so I have to actually get a x-ray.
There are different types of testing, and traditionally, sort of the testing that perhaps a lot of us are, can recall from the past is when you get the tiny little bump in your, you know, they inject a little bit in your arm, and then you look a few days later to see if it's raised. And then there's newer screening testing for tuberculosis that can be done through, through a blood test. That, those can be done in medical offices, and there's individuals who can't get either of those tests, who then might get additional types of screening with asking about symptoms and x-rays. Those are things that we do through the health department and work with our medical partners. There was a larger screening program for tuberculosis at the health department many, many years ago, which had been, had decreased due to funding, funding cuts. We have received some additional grant funding to reinstate parts of that program, not yet at the size that it was in the past, but to start to reinstate parts of that in terms of screening for tuberculosis, especially among some of the individuals and communities that might have higher risk of exposure.
Thank you. I think that, that's one thing that's important to include in your health fare outreach. I don't know if you're doing that, but I think it's good for our young new parents that probably don't even know what tuberculosis is, and just giving that awareness, especially since it can affect children, I think it's like five and under. But it's good to know that you, your office is up to date and that help is there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So while the, the previous COVID-19 emergency has been concluded, I'm curious what we've learned from the pandemic and how that has influenced any long-term disaster, disaster preparedness or planning work. Can you just speak to like how the agency is working both with other agencies to learn from the response and prepare for, you know, any sort of future crisis? And this is something I'd ask other agencies as well around sort of how they are sort of recalibrating, how, you know, we do business in the city and things that we learn from that moving forward.
I would like to bring up our Preparedness Director, Kim Eschleman, to discuss preparedness planning.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kim Eschleman, the Director of our Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response at the City Health Department. Internally in the health department, we have done a thorough review and analysis of our response in the city to the pandemic and have done what we call our after-action report, where we look at strengths of our response, but also things that we want to work on and improve and grow and expand in the future. A number of items, of course, that that analysis does for us, and I think many of which will take quite some time to move forward. Some are, have already been done, such as updating some of our internal plans, like our pandemic plan that we have, that was put to the test quite extensively. And, you know, already we knew immediately things that needed to be updated there. There are a number of other plans that we have in the agency internally and also with our city partners that we are going to be looking at reviewing extensively. One in particular, another example that comes to mind is with our mass vaccination efforts. We had identified places in the community where we thought we would do those efforts before. We learned a lot about which sites worked well and which didn't work as well, and also looking at wanting to expand and include more sites that were smaller, more grassroots, integrated into the community. And those don't only impact what happens during pandem- don't only impact what happens during a pandemic, but also other types of emergencies. So, so those have kind of far-reaching impacts into our preparednesses, from the Health Department perspective, but also for the city and changes that we want to implement going forward. So we've made some small steps, I think, with the low-hanging fruit that we could address quickly. But we know we have some longer things to look at. Another topic that I'll mention, you know, as one of those key areas, is looking at how we staff our, our responses as a city to some of these public health emergencies, and making sure we can do that efficiently and quickly. We were able to, to make it work during the pandemic, but we see opportunities for improvement there as well.
Got it. And perhaps this is for you or me, or not, but this is a follow-up. We've heard a lot recently, and I've actually been working with a constituent that's been dealing with like, sort of just long-term health impacts of long COVID. Can we speak to, I guess, how the Health Department is looking at this, I guess, sort of potential long-term crisis from folks who are experiencing long-term symptoms from COVID? I mean, maybe that's your role, maybe it's not. I don't know if that sort of works more into like, the healthcare system overall in Baltimore. But I guess, can we speak to, I guess, what the conversations are being had internally and across the city around the sort of long, the impacts of long COVID on the citizens of Baltimore?
I'm going to defer the question to Jennifer Martin.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Councilman. I think that's a really, it's a big question. So I think certainly, within public health, you know, there will be a lot of long-term monitoring around individuals with long COVID, and certainly study around the disease and the long-term impacts. I think within, within Baltimore, I think it's incumbent upon not just the Health Department, but, but all city agencies for us to be thinking about those impacts. Because it's not, it's not just the, the physical and the mental health impacts, but the, certainly the economic impacts, the effects of isolation, et cetera. So it's, it's a very big question. Within the Health Department, we're certainly working with our public health partners and our community-based partners to be, you know, just hearing about those impacts, what folks are experiencing in the field. And also, I just think the impact on our healthcare system, the healthcare system is still, still recovering. It's very difficult to hire clinical staff. It's very difficult to hire nurses. We see that in the Health Department, as well as with our healthcare partners. There's a, an EMT shortage nationally, which also is impacting Baltimore and other parts of the state. So, you know, when we think about the long-term impacts of COVID, it's a lot to unpack. And we'll be doing that for, for some time.
Okay. I mean, I guess our folks coming to the Health Department, like, is seeking, seeking additional services? I mean, you know, I read an article recently that sort of compared long COVID to things like dementia and like other sort of long-term like cognitive issues. Are folks, are you seeing an influx of people coming to you for referrals or to the agency, not to you directly, but to the agency for assistance with that? And obviously, are there concerns that there, over time, could be more and more folks with, with these sort of symptoms coming forward?
We certainly have helped connect residents to some of the long-term COVID clinics in the city. The Health Department, you know, we're not a primary care provider. So, you know, we're, we're not, you know, seeing folks for long COVID symptoms. However, we do help connect individuals to other care providers who, who come to our clinics. And we have, have been doing that for some time.
Got it. Mr. Chair, I have one more question, quick question. And it's not related to this particular topic. Sorry, I have like a list of questions here. The, this is actually on animal abuse and neglect. How many cases do we receive annually? And are, is there data collected on the findings? And I don't expect that you have that readily available. So if not, we could just ask for it later.
We do collect data, and we can provide those numbers for you.
Okay. So I would submit that as a request, Mr. Chair, and I'll repeat it. So we're looking for the number of animal abuse neglect cases reported annually. And of those cases, how many resulted in a finding of abuse? Or neglect?
That are found, yeah.
That are found, to be, I guess, positive.
Okay.
I guess what would be a reasonable timeframe? Oh, sorry, you, oh, she may have it. She may actually have the answer. Quick turnaround.
Hi. So typically, I can, I can't say number for number, but typically, on a yearly basis, we receive about 5,000 animal endanger calls. So that could range from an animal hit by a car, an animal being abused, or an animal stuck in a building and can't get out. So of those calls, we typically have about 100 to 120 true animal abuse or neglect cases that are referred to the State's Attorney's Office and the Police Department for further follow-up and charging.
Okay. Oh, so it's handled through the court system? And it's, okay.
Correct, yeah, through the criminal court system. There may be enough evidence to charge right away, or our animal abuse detective may have to do a couple more interviews or collect a little bit more evidence before actually charging.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have for, for this hearing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
I just want to just circle back again with, about the Office of Aging, and just kind of, I guess, verify that, you know, that this is going to happen. We are going to have a director that's going to be part of the Mayor's Cabinet, and that the employees that are presently handling the, that have been longstanding and working with the Commission are going to be kind of transferred over in a transition. And hopefully, down the road, we're, we're going to have outreach workers. And I know that that office literally almost affects every single office within the Health Department, within housing, just about every agency that, you know, we work with. Can I get someone, if it hasn't already happened, to just really kind of verify that and where we are, just so the general public watching knows that something good is about to happen?
Yeah, good morning. Deputy Mayor of Equity Health and Human Services, Dr. Letitia Girassa. Thank you, VP Middleton, for that question. And I do want to just take a moment and thank you as, as well as Councilman Cohen, because you all have been advocating for this for, for some time. And I know it's your commitment to our older adults that has really been the reason. And with your advocacy, as well as with your partnership, working with the city administrator, the administration is excited to support an Office of Aging that will really be focused on advocacy and planning. And as you note, the individual leading that office will be, will hold a cabinet position, and will serve to directly advise the mayor on affairs related to older adults. They will also be engaged with the Commission of Aging and Retirement Services, which will get a new name, which is currently supported through the Division of Aging at the Health Department. There will be overlap to ensure appropriate and ongoing support of that commission. But yes, I think you, you covered everything, so.
Oops. Thank you for, thank you for that wrap-up. And that's all I have.
Dr. Girassa, one more quick question on the proposed Office of Aging. Is that, is that office going to receive administrative support from the Health Department, whereas there wouldn't be additional overhead costs created as a result of it?
So in, in fiscal '24, the, the recommended budget includes $500,000 as sort of a startup funding to begin the office. So that $500,000 will include funding for the Executive Director position, and then a planning grant to really lay out sort of how they want to structure the office. I do anticipate that when we come back with the fiscal '25 budget, we're going to see sort of the full structure of that new office, where we would move it out of mayoralty into a standalone agency. And with that, we're going to see sort of not only the, the programmatic elements that will be identified from the planning grant, but we'll also see sort of the administrative and oversight function, or the sort of overhead functions that are needed for, for any city agency in order to, to sort of operate in the city. What we've seen, as we've established these offices, is that, that means that there has to be somebody who's sort of dedicated towards supporting kind of the HR payroll functions, to make sure that, that their employees are getting set up and paid properly, and then also just sort of helping out with other kind of broader administrative items, like getting things to the BOE, getting, getting items procured, that sort of thing.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Assistant Commissioner of Aging that has just really been so patient and working with us, and just hoping that you never took any of this personally. It's just all about us just trying to get those services out there to the people. I know you're a dedicated person to, for this city as well. And just you, you know, withstanding and being patient with all the meetings that we had. And at the end of the day, it's about the partnership, both with you and, I guess I'll say, our former Commissioner, now a Deputy Mayor. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conley, Fourth District. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the, the work you guys do and continue to do. Now, my, my first question is regarding vacancies in the Health Department. How many of these positions are COVID-related?
Was the question, how many, how many are COVID-related?
Yes. How many of your vacant positions today are COVID-related?
I would have to look, look to find that exact number.
Councilman, can you clarify?
How many positions are vacant are related to our effort to address the implications of COVID, whether it be for outreach or?
I thought, thank you. I thought you were saying they're vacant because, yeah, okay.
Yes.
So, so how many of the vacancies are vacant positions that programmatically are there to deal with the COVID pandemic?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm presuming we mean that might be funded through ARPA? Because as a position, the Health Department doesn't have, you know, dedicated positions specifically, you know, for COVID. Do you have the number for?
Councilman, many of the positions that are part of the department's response to COVID are funded by ARPA dollars. And so because of how the, the funding status on our ARPA positions are set up, they don't pull into a lot of our vacancy reporting. So if, if you were amenable to it, we will work with the Health Department team and provide that as a follow-up to the committee.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. My other question, Mr. Chair is okay. My other question is regarding animal control issues. So I, of course, had an issue in, in my district, and I understand Councilman Burnett has also had this issue in his district, where there have been dangerous animals or abused animals for which owners were told to return those animals, turn those over to animal control. They refused to do so. They refused entry, causing a number of problems that I saw just in our process and how we manage it between the Police Department, between animal control. I'm, I'm really curious about, in learning from those multiple instances, what we have changed or what we may change in order to make sure that when instances of dangerous animals or abused animals, and they have owners that don't allow entry, that we have a method for making sure that we do intervene.
Thank you. Appreciate the question. In cases where it would rise to a criminal warrant, police would still be assisting us with those warrants? We have actually, so we have an MOU in place with the Baltimore Police Department. But I'm happy to, to announce that the Sheriff's Department is actually now going to be assisting us on all of our administrative warrants. Sheriff Sam Kogan has agreed to that. And we look, you know, we're currently working on the MOU. So that's, that's going to be of tremendous help to us on those situations that don't necessarily rise to a criminal level, or we suspect they do, but we don't have the evidence, to get an administrative warrant with the support of the Sheriff's Office, to ensure that our animal enforcement officers are safe when they're executing those warrants.
Do we have anyone from law, or do you have legal counsel here?
Here, here present or working on?
Yeah, yeah. Does Health Department have counsel here?
We don't have counsel here right now, no.
Can you just tell me a little, this really isn't a Health Department question, it's a BPD question. Can you tell me why BPD won't go in the House?
It, it really has to do with their authority under executing an administrative versus a criminal warrant.
So that's a-
That they do not believe.
Statutory authority that the Sheriff has that BPD doesn't?
Yes. The Sheriff's Office has the authority to administer administrative warrants.
And has, has someone from either the Law Department or legal counsel advised you of that? Or is that something that BPD has just said to you?
There has been legal advice, but I would, I would defer really the question to BPD to further explain.
Got it. Can, can we get that legal opinion that says that BPD won't go in the House to support an, an animal control-related effort?
I don't know that there would be a legal opinion that would state that in that way, but it would have to do with the authority of being able to execute an administrative warrant when they execute criminal warrants.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I was gonna say, I can follow up with legal and see if we can get something.
Thanks. I'm just curious. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And, and my next question is around substance abuse in treatment facilities. There's a great need for substance abuse treatment, of course, of course, across our city. I do have some concerns about the regulation of them. They've been popping up all over the place. And there's a balance there that I think we've yet to find. I'm curious how the department has been thinking about this, one meeting the need for folks who are dealing with drug addiction or other mental health issues. And these institutions that seem to be popping up very frequently throughout the city.
I'm going to refer the question to Deputy Martin around the authority and the administration and oversight of those facilities.
So there are many different types of facilities. And some are more healthcare-based than others. For those programs that are healthcare facilities providing medical services, there is oversight from the State Department of Health through their Office of Healthcare Quality. But, you know, for other types of recovery homes and recovery programs, licensure is, is not required. You know, Ms. Jefferson shared earlier, just that BHSB does have some capacity to do, to do investigations. But a lot of time, the regulation of those facilities does come down to code enforcement. So I, I think your question, you're asking just kind of how are we thinking about that in terms of increased treatment? I mean, we, we certainly support increased treatment for substance use disorder. And, you know, from a policy standpoint, we want to work with providers to be good, to be good citizens within the neighborhoods in which they function. And we work with BHSB on, on that as well. But there is no formal oversight role.
No formal oversight role at the- No formal oversight role at the city level, mostly, really at the state level, when there is licensing required, is what you're saying?
Correct. When there is healthcare licensing required.
Got it. And do we, do we monitor at all or have any sense of the efficacy of some of the programs? Some of them work really well, some of them have great returns, some don't. Do we have any sense of that, or is that all sort of managed at the state level?
Yeah, so in the Health Department, we don't have that kind of monitoring of, of the programs, and I don't know, Stacy, if you want to add anything from BHSB's standpoint, but, you know, the Health Department does not monitor that way.
Okay.
Yeah, again, it's a state-driven system. So we do at behavioral health system Baltimore, work with our, we work with the state in order to oversee quality. And so as you know, I know we've talked before, if there are issues or concerns about programs, they report it to us, and we work with the state and the Office of Healthcare Quality to look into those concerns. The system is really a, any willing provider system, and, you know, these facilities are able to locate by right. And so oftentimes, you know, they, they pick places, there is no regulation around where they must be, or, you know, location or anything like that. But we do, again, work with the state to really oversee that quality. And again, people can, if they have issues or concerns with providers, can work with us and let it notify us, and we do investigate all complaints.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I won't go too into weeds. This is a sensitive issue, and I'm not sure yet how we reasonably stay on top of it to continue to meet the need, but not end up with significant concentrations of sort of treatment centers in, in certain core parts of the city, because I think there's a balance there that I don't know how to keep. So I appreciate the work you guys are doing, and I would love to circle back to better understand how we can work with these folks in a way that, that is sensible. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? Seeing as there are no questions, Mary Beth, I want to thank you and the entire team at the Health Department for the incredible work that you do every day. Dr. Dean, great to see you back in chambers. I know you love being here. And Mary Beth, I want to thank you for your leadership during the transition period. I can sleep easy at night knowing the Health Department's in good hands with, with you at the helm steering the ship, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
We are now in recess until 12:30 PM for the Department of Planning.